Council members, both Mayor Whalen and Deputy Mayor Moss are absent from this evening's meeting pursuant to the City Council Rules of Procedure Section 6. The council shall elect one of its members to serve as presiding officer. We'll need a motion to elect a presiding officer from council members.
I would like to make a motion and nominate Councilmember Bokey.
Thank you very much. We will call the Monday, June 17, 2024 Lakewood City Council Meeting to order. Clerk, could you please read the roll?
Councilmember Bell, here. Councilmember Bokey.
Here.
Councilmember Branstadter.
Here.
Councilmember Lorisella. Councilmember Pearson.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Moss and Mayor Whalen have been excused. You have a quorum.
Thank you very much, Ms. Schumaker. We will start with a moment's silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. There are no proclamations and presentations this evening, so we will start with public comments. Public comments are accepted by mail, email, or live virtual or in-person comment. Send comments in advance by mail or email to Brianna Schumacher, City Clerk here in Lakewood at cityoflakewood.us. Comments received up to one hour before the meeting have been provided to the council electronically. The clerk will read the names of those who have submitted comments in advance. Did we get any advance comments?
Councilmember Bokey, we received written comments in advance of this evening's meeting from Andy Osborne.
And those have been distributed to the council.
Correct. Those were distributed to the city council via email.
Thank you. Please announce that members of the audience may comment on items relating to any matter related to city business under the public comments period. Comments are limited to three minutes per person. Virtual comments, if you'd like to provide live virtual public comments, you will need to join the Zoom meeting as an attendee and/or visit Zoom US and entering the meeting ID. Upon entering the meeting, please enter your name. Use your raise the hand feature to be called upon. For those participating by calling in by telephone to use the raise hand feature, press star nine on your phone. When you are unmuted, please provide your name and city of residence. Each speaker will be allowed three minutes to speak. Outside public comments, all attendees of Zoom will continue to have the ability to virtually raise your hand for the duration of the meeting. You will not be acknowledged, and your microphone will remain muted except for when you are called upon. So first, please, we are going to start tonight on the Zoom calls. Ms. Schumacher, do we have any calls virtually?
First, we have Dennis Houghan.
Thank you, Mr. Houghan. Welcome. Please state your name and place of residence and...
Dennis Houghan from Zoo Falls, South Dakota, formerly a member of, formerly a resident of Lakewood and up till 19 April of 2020. Wanted to make a comment on another comment that was made the last time. Someone said was talking about putting the high-rise in the, in the, somewhere in the mall area there, probably over the Target store or something like that, and commenting on the structural problems for that. I believe that that would be a very unlikely building to put up if it were done strictly on market forces without, without grants and in the form of either helping with original construction or guarantees for government rent to be paid for people. And I find that to be unlikely because, number one, if you're living up in a high-rise building and you look down on the street, it can be very scary if fires are being started below you. You see, there's two components to your police force, and one component is missing. You have your police force, but then in a situation where you have a riot and need more people, I think that you don't have a governor behind you. And every, every, every city in the, in Washington State doesn't have what I would call a competent governor, because you left the CHAD area unprotected for several weeks, and people couldn't get services. And I've met people that have lived in high-rises. Over that situation, it's very scary. So for, from the standpoint of security, it's very doubtful, and market forces are not likely to require it to be built because, well, you never hear what you never hear in your comments is anything about building the economy with private investments in private industries. You're always, it's like you're having a contest to see who can build the most buildings for the homeless. But there's a lot of problems with that. They're now getting, illegal migrants are now getting mixed up with people who have been here, who are citizens here. And it's encouraging and setting up incentives for people to come from other countries to live in housing that you're building on federal grants. So we've got an incentive system that's backwards, upside down, and nobody seems to analyze the whole situation. So I don't think it's very likely for a long time that you'll be building a high-rise.
Thank you very much, Mr. Houghan, for your comments. Do you have any other commenters virtually?
Councilmember Bokey, there are no other virtual hands raised at this time.
Thank you very much. So we will go into chambers here. The first speaker we have tonight, the only one who signed up, but of course you can speak if you have not signed up, Mr. Kerry Hills.
Hello, council members. My name is Kerry Hills. I apologize for my attire tonight. I came straight from teaching a class at the Y. So last time I came and spoke, it was about the tax incentive that was being explored along Gravel Lake Drive and around the corner up towards Nianza, given a tax incentive for those individuals to produce more housing here in the city of Lakewood. I don't know if you guys read in Suburban Times, but there's a quick quack car wash that's going to be opening on Silicon Boulevard. And as you read through the application down near the bottom, it says there's an existing eight-unit apartment complex that would be demolished to make room for this new construction. So I'm a little confused on why we're offering tax incentives where we have business to put in housing, and where we have housing, we want to put in business. And so it's just confusing to me. If we looked at the current housing that we have and maybe gave tax incentives to those apartments that are rundown and needing to be refurbished in our city, I can think about in the Lake City area where there's a lot of housing that probably could benefit from that. They're all single-story. You could certainly raise those up. So this may be an alternative idea about how you want to impose or, what's the word I'm looking for? That you want to add some new housing to the city here in Lakewood. Use the existing spaces that are already set aside for housing. I mean, the Central Business District, I would assume is for business, and so we have business here, and some of that you want to take out and put in housing. So it doesn't quite fit for the Central Business District in my mind. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Hills. Anyone else like to speak? Please come on up and state your name and city of residence.
Hello, everybody. Well, not quite everybody, but kind of everybody. I also wanted to comment on the two proposals that we saw this week. My name is Christina Menetti. I live in Lakewood. The car wash across from Safeway on Silicon Boulevard and the oil change place that is going to go, would supposedly go close to the intersection where the Dutch Brothers Coffee is by the Donut House. Yeah, I was really surprised, you know, Gravel Lake Drive should be our kind of representative street. You know, that's the main one that goes, you know, through the whole town. And, I mean, parts of it used to be quite nice. And there used to be oil change place and, I don't know, gas stations, whatever, car repair places. And it would be nice, like, if we could, like, move it up, like, if we could, like, elevate ourselves a little and have something there that's, you know, a little more elegant, a little more inviting. Somebody, one of the community members suggested, yeah, we could have, why couldn't we have an ice cream shop? Or, I don't know, something, you know, that would be, you know, enjoyable for people and would, like, look nice, right? Because that part of the road has been abandoned for a long time. I don't know if you remember, but there used to be Love's Restaurant on the corner. I think it's been, like, closed since I was in fourth grade, like, 1970s or something. So, like, I don't know what's going on with that, but it seems like a lot of things could go on there that would make it a nicer place. Also, I wanted to mention about the log. I mean, I assume it got to where it was going in one piece, which is really great news. I didn't see it. That would have been kind of scary, I think, to watch it. But I heard, or rather, I read somewhere in the city publication, that it's going to be in the park wrapped in plastic until the autumn. Now, I don't know exactly where it is in the park wrapped in plastic, like, is it, it's not in a shelter or anything, right? And it's going to be in the sun. It, well, I mean, potentially in the sun, if we get any sun, but it's going to be in the rain, you know, and there's going to be humidity trapped in there, which I told them before. So I know they say the experts are taking care of it or whatever, but you don't want to leave it there all summer in the elements wrapped in plastic unless you really are sure that the experts know what they're talking about. So that was another concern. And the final thing I wanted to mention was, you've got the lake, the bridge problem. In my neighborhood, it is great. It is really great that there's no bridge because the deer can walk, you know, peacefully in the street more, and we can walk more peacefully. There's not noise. There aren't people going to that boat launch anymore. It is really great. It might be nice to take down the bridge entirely, I mean, good to take down the bridge entirely because according to DNR, I talked to the Department of Natural Resources, those pilings, I believe, as lake residents have told me, are covered in creosote, which is toxic, and they've been removed all over Puget Sound. I mean, I don't know of all of them, but tons and tons have been removed through this project with DNR. I called them and I asked them, she said she didn't know about freshwater creosote pilings, but she would say, it's time to get them out. So you don't want to, like, fix it all up and have your creosote there still.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Menetti.
Bad for salmon, too.
Please come down.
Hello, my name is James Dunlop, and I am a Lakewood resident. Oh, I'm glad Mr. Houghan is still singing the virtues of the governor of South Dakota, Kristi Noem. You know, one doesn't want to make ad hominem criticisms, but, you know, I'm kind of amazed after the episode with the goat and the dog and the fact that she wanted to have fireworks in a national park, major fire risk. But anyway, I'm glad she's working out for residents of South Dakota. What else? Okay, a couple of weeks ago, I visited the, a city council meeting at Tumwater by Zoom, and it was, it was kind of quite moving. The Zoom, the city council meeting was relating to the potential felling of an oak, the David Meeker oak at Tumwater, and the mayor of Tumwater wanted to cut this oak down because it was a hazard, and a lot of residents of Tumwater were really upset about it. You know, it was one of these times, you know, as you know, as city councils know, you have weeks, months of no one turning up, then one sunny evening, 100 people turn up or 50 people turn up. But what was really nice about that meeting was the reaction of the city councillors. The city councillors really seemed to actually listen to what the people of Tumwater were saying, and they were responding, and, you know, they were concerned about their own reputation, and they'd, you know, when someone told them that maybe even after they were dead, they weren't going to be forgiven for cutting this tree down. It seemed that the members of the city council did have, you know, were able to think for themselves. And then I compare it with Lakewood City Council, who never seemed to think themselves, hardly ever seemed to think for themselves, at least not in a public sense. Now, as far as the bridge is concerned, of, I'm thinking about the creosote. So I think, I'm not a great expert on these things, but I think that with creosote, as with creosote and asphalt, I think it contains benzene. And so what you've got is you've got benzene potentially leaching into the, into Lake Silicon. I suppose it's already leaching into Lake Silicon. And as you perhaps know, benzene is a horrific carcinogen. And so I'm assuming that when that creosote gets taken off, that that is going to be the point when the lake is going to get flooded with, with, with benzene. And I don't, I don't know about what, what the level of contamination is going to be, but, you know, that goes into the water, people swim in the water, people fish. And I really must emphasize, benzene is a really nasty substance. And so I think the city council needs to make sure that when that creosote gets taken off, that, if it gets taken off, that any, you do something to make sure that the lake doesn't get contaminated with benzene more than it has to. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Dunlop. Are there any others people who wish to speak in public comment?
Hello. Good evening to everyone. My name is Abraham Mirjelili. I'm a resident of Lakewood. And the reason I am here, I wanted to actually discuss something else, but I thought that it would be a disservice to the resident of this great city not to acknowledge what all the love and affection that they have been having for us, contrary to the decision of this council. And please let me read just this note. I didn't, I couldn't, and I didn't want to bring the flowers that they, they bring and they leave it there. So we don't know even who they are. I don't know even who were those who wrote this, but let me read it to you for a moment, please. Thank you. "To the Mirjelili family, much love, support, and prayer from your Lakewood neighborhood, neighbors. We are with you all the way in body, heat, and spirit. Peace be upon your family. God be with you all." This is what it is, and that's what you have done to us. You wanted to deceive us to sign a map that the person who has the fictitious map that he has came up with it, now doesn't want to even accept responsibility for it. He says, "I was never asked to survey your property. I never did survey your property." But he came up with not one, but two maps for our property that you wanted us to sign it in writing to accept it. And, and now this, this person says, "No, I didn't. I only did survey, I was asked to survey the city right of way." Survey really, cities right of way is only limited to edge water derived. The Pierce County lost any right it had to Silver Street during 1800s, and that's reaffirmed by the decision of the court, Pierce County Superior Court, on November 24, 1915. None of us were born then. I think this is really embarrassing. You guys are spending and wasting actually a lot of money from the city residents and taxpayers only just because we don't see any other reason for it, because you hate us. You don't want us to be in this town. We will be in this town. We assure you we will be in this town, and we will be coming back even after, even if you succeed in what you are doing. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mirjelili. Are there any other folks who would like to comment this evening? Okay, we will close public comment. Thank you very much. Ms. Schumacher, would you like to read in the consent agenda?
A, approval of the minutes of the city council study session of May 28, 2024. B, approval of the minutes of the city council meeting of June 3, 2024. C, motion number 2024-40, authorizing American Rescue Plan Act funding in the amount of $2,500 to sponsor the Buffalo Soldiers 2024 Labor Day Festival. D, motion number 2024-41, authorizing the execution of an agreement with Robert Droll Landscape Architects for the Harry Todd Park Pickleball Court Project. E, items filed in the office of the city clerk, one, Lakewood's Promise Advisory Board meeting minutes of March 7, 2024, and two, Lakewood's Promise Advisory Board meeting minutes of April 11, 2024.
Thank you, Ms. Schumacher. Are there any items that any member of the council would like removed from the consent agenda? Okay, could we get a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
I move to adopt the consent agenda, Ms. Chair. Second?
Thank you. It has been moved by Councilmember Branstadter, seconded by Councilmember Lorisella that we approve the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, there is no unfinished business, I believe, Mr. City Manager?
There's none.
Is there any new business?
There's not.
Okay, so now we're to reports by the city manager.
Thank you, Councilmember Bokey, and good evening, council. I'd like to call upon our city attorney, and she, as well as Captain Wesby, to give you an update on where we are with automated traffic safety camera systems here in Lakewood. So, is that?
Just as an aside, it is Captain Wesby's birthday today, but I will proceed with other matters of the day rather than dwell on that. So what you have before you is the automated traffic camera systems in the city of Lakewood and recent state legislation. And one of the reasons we wanted to bring this to you, even though we're not calling for much, if any, action, is because as we got to the end of the legislative term, we discovered that this piece of legislation had really become sort of a something for everyone, and as a result, a concerning piece of legislation. We really weren't sure exactly what we had gotten by the time the legislative term ended. So I'm going to run through with you what we have now and what our options are given that. So first, what you have here, and it's a little bit of a small map, but you can see on there the yellow school signs and then the traffic signals. That is your current camera program in the city of Lakewood. You have cameras at Bridgeport Way in San Francisco. You have cameras at Bridgeport Way in San Francisco. You have cameras at 512 and South Tacoma Way, cameras at Silicon Boulevard and Phillips Road Southwest. Those are all red light cameras. And then you have school zone cameras on Gravelly Lake Drive and Silicon Boulevard. This is basically what they look like, and I asked for these pictures because I want you to see, these are well-marked areas. We aren't doing like surprise, you're on candid camera kind of a thing. People can see them and know that they're at risk if they're speeding. So we have our cameras, they're all marked with signage. The tickets are currently reviewed by the Lakewood Police Department, and they're processed through our own municipal court. And I will go through in a little bit of detail how we get to the options that are before you now. Lakewood has had camera programs for as long as Washington has had camera programs. We were one of the first. And as you can see, we issued quite a few tickets, and there is obviously some revenue associated with that. That revenue goes into the general fund, and the general fund helps pay for public safety in the city of Lakewood. The question became, when this new legislation came out, what does that mean for our revenue stream? And as the legislation was going through, it really depended on what day you asked. And so when the legislation completely was done and is now before us, what we have is the ability to continue our program the way we have continued it. And the specific language in the law is that the local jurisdiction, provided your program stays at a certain size, the local jurisdiction continues to control whatever is done with the revenue. You know what the public safety issues are here. You can have a say in the budgeting as it comes to that. If we grow by more than one camera, we then become subject to the tiny typing that is on the other side of that slide. And it's essentially that you're restricted to certain types of traffic safety programs and the cost of the administration of the program. And really, when you look at it, that's not super constraining, but then four years out from the time you implement that program, 25% of the revenue goes to the state. They're going to take it back. That four years out, 25% only applies if we expand our program to a certain point. So that's what I have for you, and I wanted Captain Westby to be here because he actually helps run the program. He can speak to the safety implications of it, and he can speak to some of the logistics. But we would be happy to try and answer any questions. Our recommendation is to keep the program at the size it's at.
Thank you. Captain Westby, do you have any remarks before we go to questions?
I was busy here keeping up with the legislature on this one. Literally, the legislation that came out was 16 pages, I mean, for, for traffic safety projects, and it was all kinds of strings attached. And it was just a nightmare to go through. So, and after having put in a lot of work over the year to try to look at different systems, it really just kind of put a nail in the coffin for us in terms of local decision-making. So we really took a hard look at this and decided, and, and I talked with Heidi, and we really need this program as a force multiplier, but we also need it, we need to be able to implement it as we wish.
Does anybody have any questions for Captain Westby? Councilmember Branstadter?
I have a number of questions today. One is, when, if we were to increase the number of cameras, and I've heard from the public some desires to increase the number of cameras, particularly in, in school zones, to be able to go and do that. But the, there's apparently a threshold about increasing by one. And so is it, when we're talking about the total number, right now, we have two school zone cameras and three red light cameras at intersections.
Locations.
And, yeah, three locations. Okay, and so each intersection counts as one. Okay, that. And we've made the calculation that we can stay with the current allocation of dollars that are generated if we don't go beyond six. Is that what I'm hearing?
We're allowed by legislation that came out this last year to, due to our, the size of our city and the amount of camera systems we have, we can only increase by one location.
Is that because they've said you're limited to six, or is it, or did they just say increase by one, so that a city that had 20 can go to 21, and a city with?
Councilmember Branstadter, there are a couple paragraphs that address this. The one that addresses the city specifically has to do with the number of cameras we have. If you have less than 10 cameras, you may increase by one before you hit the threshold. There's a different paragraph that's if it's a bigger program that you can increase by a percentage. But ours is specific that if you are less than 10 locations, you can only increase by one location.
Okay. So if we were to increase by several, okay, and then after four years, a percentage of the revenue after expenses would go to the state?
I'm not clear on whether it's 25% after expenses. I'm not sure that's what it says, but I can certainly check that. But yes, at four years, 25% of your revenue is then going back to the state.
Okay, I guess I interpreted the presentation that we had in the packet that way, is that that you, you still get to keep the money, need to run it, and then it's, it's above that, that it's 25. But I would like to do that. I, I would just, I would just say that it doesn't make sense to increase by two. The math does sounds very strange to me to increase by two to be able to go to this. But that, the idea is that traffic safety cameras promote safety, and that's the primary reason we have them. We don't have them for revenue purposes. We happen to get revenue because we, because we have costs, and then there's some additional revenue that goes into the general fund currently. But if we were to increase it by a number because we were, that made sense from an improving safety standpoint, what does the state's 25% pay for?
Being put into a Cooper Jones Transportation Act fund, and beyond that, the legislation doesn't really address it. I'm assuming that it would go to some sort of transportation support, given the name of that fund. But there's not particular restrictions talked about in the legislation itself.
Well, you know, I hear the recommendation that we, maybe I don't hear the recommendation, is, is the recommendation that we stay with what we have, or that we explore one additional location?
One location, both. In essence, it's both, staying with the existing provider and expanding one location.
Okay, but there is no recommendation yet or decision about what a new location would be, or whether it would be a school camera or a red light camera?
No, not yet.
It appears that we started our program in 2005. Okay, that, which is when the, the city council then passed an ordinance about establishing the program.
Councilmember Branstadter, the city participated in a pilot program when we were still represented by Pierce County and law enforcement. We were the first jurisdiction in the state of Washington to use photo enforcement. The 2005 ordinance was adopted by this council about a year after we'd stood up a police department and adopted it as our own true program. So that's the history piece on it.
I guess my concern is, is that even following the recommendation that we have, the current Lakewood Municipal Code has a section on the use of automated traffic safety cameras. And it, it restricts us to having only two cameras at intersections for red light enforcement. You know, that's, that's what, that's what the, you know, the 1004040 is. That, it seems that, A, is that section of the Lakewood Municipal Code even required, given the fact that there's state regulations that could be incorporated under the model traffic ordinance? Or do we need to amend it, at least to get to the point of where we are saying to ourselves that we have authorized the police department to operate three? Whereas right now, the code only says two.
Yeah, we would amend our ordinance. There is no situation where I would recommend you to not have an ordinance on the books. And so the ordinance, as you indicate, should reflect the number of cameras that we have, and we can certainly present that amendment to the council. But in this instance, part of what helped the city is the fact that the legislation was very specific as to when cities had programs. And one of the ways that you demonstrate that is through your ordinance.
Okay, so I guess it's kind of a housekeeping matter to look to amend the ordinance to authorize what we're doing now, just in terms of changing it from two to three in terms of the intersections that we can have red light cameras. I, you know, I appreciate the update and getting an understanding and recognizing that it was not a simple state ordinance to understand. I think it would be nice in the, in the, in the future, though, to know what that particular fund that would get money, should something happen, would do in case it's something significantly beneficial that might play into a decision to take a look at some significant increase in numbers. If we would still be getting an adequate amount of money, maybe even as much as we do now with more cameras, but that the, the money that would go to the state would, would actually do some good to do that, as opposed to just narrowly looking at it as a revenue issue, and continue to evaluate it as a, as a, as a safety issue foremost.
I, I can.
But thank you.
I can answer that question. 4668 says that the transportation safety account is created in the state treasury. So it was created for this purpose. All penalties collected shall be deposited into the account and can be used only to fund grant projects or programs for bicycle, pedestrian, and non-motorist safety improvement administered by the Washington Traffic Safety Commission. That's it. And then it requires reporting on that. It's, it's a very short paragraph. It's much shorter than the legislation we were dealing with.
Yeah, and I have no idea what that means the money would go for.
Non-motorist.
Yeah.
Yeah, pedestrians, bicycles.
I think I'd be able to turn this on. I know the state did, I believe, a new program, bicycle pedestrian program, which is different than Safe Route Schools, which is an incredibly popular program. So it might be just going to the bicycle pedestrian program, which can go out to everybody. Where Safe Route School, we've been.
Correct.
We've been a very strong beneficiary of that plan. So, Councilmember Branstadter, do you have, okay. Thank, thank, thank you, Councilmember Branstadter. Any other questions for Councilmember Lorisella?
See if I can figure out the mic. Thank you, Councilmember Bokey, and Captain Westby, and, and Ms. Walker. A couple of questions. So conceivably, the cameras make us safer, right? We have data that shows the cameras that we've put in place have reduced incidents, accidents, injuries, that sort of thing?
Statistically, yes, over time, the amount of collisions and accidents decrease.
And adding more cameras and more intersections should also help with that, right?
Statistically, that should be the case.
Okay. If we were to move beyond adding just one, is there a limit to how many we could add in this other option?
It's, it's just the one camera, one location for us. If we increase by more than that one location, it triggers us falling into the new law.
He's asking a question about.
Yeah, if we were to, in that instance, accept the triggering of the new law.
You can, you can add pretty much as many as you would like to add. I will tell you that for each location that is selected, there are also some parameters about the demographics of the neighborhood into which you put the cameras, and in turn, regulation as to the way those fees are scaled for the neighborhood in which those cameras go. There's an acknowledgement that in some of the neighborhoods, it's really important to get the safety into those neighborhoods, but it's also an acknowledgement that it's really hard for folks to pay the fines.
Right.
And, and so they're looking for placement in some of those neighborhoods, but they're also looking for not hitting people too hard with the fines.
Right. Okay, that makes sense. And the Lakewood PD conducted a study of possible locations, Ward's Lake Park, Silicon Park, St. Clair Hospital, and in front of Clorpark High School. The results of that came with a projected forecast of revenue, right?
It wasn't a projected forecast of revenue. It was just whether or not the sites were feasible.
Okay.
For enough activity to keep the program funded for itself, and it was.
Okay. I'd be curious to see if we were to forecast what that could look like, if that would be more than the 25% hit we would take by triggering this incident, if that makes sense, or triggering the different process, to see whether it's revenue neutral and we get better safety out of it. That's, that'd be a win-win, I would think, understanding that it limits what we can put those funds towards, but maybe it offsets that we can spend other general fund money on safety. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Lorisella. Any other questions? Councilmember Bell?
Thank you, Chair. I have a question on the sliding scale. I wondered if you could explain that a little bit more. When you were saying the fees depending on the area that.
Yeah, there is, they actually go so far as to suggest perhaps even having a calculator to calculate what the fee should be in certain neighborhoods. They don't give specifics on that. And, and it, to me, it was reminiscent of what is now happening on misdemeanor cases in court, where they're saying, you know, if people aren't able to pay, then they can't be made to pay. So.
So then they would only pay up, is it the first time, and does it change on the second or the third time that they?
I did not get that sense. I got the sense that there was a concern just about people who don't have that ability to pay. That needed to be recognized. And, and there's a lack of reconciliation in this legislation where, on the one hand, and I think I mentioned this, they're saying the neighborhoods really need to slow down the speeding, you know, there are pedestrians and so forth. But at the same time, they don't want to unduly penalize the people who are speeding. So I'm not sure where, what they were trying to get at, but no, they don't actually reconcile that notion of the sliding scale. They simply acknowledge it, and they talk about the city having to do demographic studies in the places where the cameras are placed, so that we can be conversant in what financial impact we're having by putting the cameras there.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Councilmember Bell. Councilmember Pearson?
Thank you. So, so with the new law, the money goes into a different pot. And the way it currently is, if we only increase by one camera, then the money still goes into the general fund. Is that correct?
That's correct. It goes into the general fund and a significant portion of your general fund, and you're about to go into the budget cycle. So you know this goes to public safety. And as long as it's got that sort of free flow to it, it allows your judgment to influence what parts of public safety, where in the system you want to put it. And once there are constraints put on that, you don't have nearly as much freedom with it.
Yeah, that, that's my concern, is that once the funds leave the, the general fund, then we really are constrained with what kind of projects that we can do and where we can do those projects at. And, you know, we And, you know, we've, we've put a lot of focus on doing some projects in some of these areas that would probably be more advantageous to use these new funds for. And so I just worry that, you know, we've kind of already exhausted some of the good projects, the good viable, cheap projects, easy to do projects. And so now we'd be left with expensive, you know, less bang for your buck projects. And, you know, I'd be in favor of keeping it in the, in the general fund to use for a number of different things that all go towards the common goal of, of public safety.
Thank you, Councilmember Pearson. So I'll just, I've just got a couple of questions. Within the legislation, I mean, you mentioned, we've got cameras. You've mentioned that there's concerns about, in the legislature, about unduly burdening some neighborhoods. Can we move the existing cameras and still count them under our, is moving cameras okay?
I, it's unclear and I, frankly, I don't want to be the test case.
Okay.
When you think about how this legislation got to the stage it did, it's because there were a number of advocates promoting their particular thing, and they couldn't reconcile it into a coherent message. So somewhere in there, there are people that are looking to constrain the city's use of cameras.
And if we did put in four more cameras, let's just say theoretically, and after the first one, the next three would fall under these parameters where we would have to do it to reduce speeds through road design and improvements to access safety for road users. Do, is, is there a no supplant? Is there non-supplant language in the legislation that doesn't, that makes it in, this is in addition to what you already spend, or?
There's not a no supplant language in there. And truly, I think, given the one and two on your slide, that's probably something that the city could find a way to work through. It would be cumbersome, but it wouldn't necessarily prohibit the city from being able to pursue mostly public safety generally the way you want to. The bigger concern is when you get four years out, and it's not just the cameras that you added, it's your program. It's all of the revenue from your program and likely Councilmember Bransdeter may be correct that you can carve out some of what you spend on the program itself. But the rest of it is going to become subject to that 25% for the Cooper Jones Act, which then goes to grants for, you know, whatever city writes the best grant proposal.
Right, could go to Quincy or something, okay.
Yeah.
All right, so thank you for the recommendations. I, I think we'll hear going forward, or if the council has any other things when we get closer towards budget and making decisions about capital expenditures, I guess it falls under capital expenditures, or I don't know how the county, we'll make a decision about whether we want to add one camera or not, I guess, is what I'm hearing. Okay, Councilmember Dolores Sella has an initial question.
Yeah, just one more question. When we were studying these other locations, there was also talk about changing the vendor, is that correct?
There was talk about changing the vendor, and that has now been put on hold. And I will tell you, when I talked to Captain Westby about this, every jurisdiction, or at least most jurisdictions that were talking to this new vendor, have put their discussions on hold for this very reason.
Is that because if we change vendors, it then triggers the?
Correct, that, that there's a concern. It's not 100% clear, but it's a concern.
Entering a new contract. And you're moving out of the realm of having an existing program.
When is our current contract up?
We are current month to month at this point.
Okay, so we wouldn't have a new contract because it's month to month?
It would be renewal.
Okay, and that would not trigger?
It's the same provider we've used since the late 90s, early 2000s.
Okay, what, what was driving us to consider new, a new vendor?
Technology, new providers, just consistency with other jurisdictions in the area.
Okay. Thank you.
I, I will tell the council, there is one small additional piece that we will be bringing back when we come back to talk about parking, because the council wanted there to be comparability in types of violations between jurisdictions and between types of violations. We are going to include a look at the penalty provisions for photo enforcement because we're finding that that's a little bit lower than what the statute provides.
Thank you very much. Are there any other additional questions for Ms. Walker, Captain Westby? Thank you very much, Chair. Mr. Caulfield. Continue.
Thank you, Councilmember Bokey. Just a few more updates, if I might. This past Saturday afternoon, the city in partnership, or rather, St. Joseph's, St. John Episcopal Church, in partnership with the city, held Lakewood Juneteenth event here in the city council chambers. And it was a wonderful success. Want to recognize Councilmember Bell for coming and providing a warm welcome to all the, all the folks that attended the event. And I'd like to also just recognize our team that worked very closely with the church under the leadership of our communications manager, Bryn Grimley, as well as Megan Davis, Brianna Schumacher, Nikki York, Riley York, and, and Mary Dawsworth. And if I'm missing anybody, I apologize. But again, just wanted to recognize them. Also want to recognize our city clerk, Brianna Schumacher. She's probably gonna jab me here in a second. She has been recognized as one of just 300 clerks in 38 states here in the United States of America, and one of five in Washington State to be recognized as part of the 2024 Municipal Clerks Honor Role. And this recognition is to honor really the unsung heroes of our communities as it relates to the transaction of city, town and village business. And those are our clerks. And just want to recognize Ms. Schumacher for that. And just to put that in perspective, there's 281 cities and towns in Washington State, and there are well over 19,000 within the United States. So she's in very, very small company there. The Maureen Howard Place, which is an emergency shelter that's being operated by Lehigh, which is the former Candlewood Suites, they did finalize their permitting issues primarily through the fire district in the last week or so. So the city was able to issue them a certificate of occupancy last week. They are slated to open for business on June 20th, where they'll be taking in folks in need from the state right of way, as well as some other facilities, including hotels and, and the like. And they're looking at hosting a grand opening a week from today, June 24th, Monday at 11:00 a.m. Also wanted to report that on Friday, the, the city council, you received 38 applications to serve on your 2024, 2025 Youth Council, which is actually an increase from last year. I think last year you had 32. So it continues, it continues to grow. So those appointments are, will be coming forward to you and the, for your consideration and approval here in the near future. And in the past, you've had a joint meeting with your youth council around the November timeframe or so. However, what we've heard from the council in your recent conversations with the past youth, with this year's youth council, is to perhaps do it a little earlier. And so typically, the youth council gets together in the August timeframe to kind of do a little bit of team building and such. So we'll look to try and include the council in that. So you have an opportunity in a more informal social setting, be able to get to know those youth council members. So more to follow on that. I want to thank the Pierce County Library System, and specifically their executive director, Gretchen Cacerati, for her effort and endeavor in moving the, the log slice, if you will, the tensile log from the former Lakewood Library last week down to Fort Silicon Park, as well as Mary Dawsworth, our Parks and Recreation Director, and her team on our end in receiving that big piece of wood. I think it's about nine tons or so. So it is now displayed down at Fort Silicon Park. And so now that it's been moved down there, and then in the next few months or so, we'll be building a, a shelter that will be able to protect it from the elements over time, though it is a piece of wood in a, in a log and trees are typically outside, so. But in any event, that is moving forward. Also, Pierce County First Village, we learned, actually right before this meeting, that apparently both sides of this issue, both the proponent of the, of the, of the village and the, some of the opponents have, or have sent a letter to the Pierce County Hearing Examiner expressing an intent to file, to file a reconsideration of the Hearing Examiner's decision, and specifically what their argument or their position is, we don't know yet, but they have until July 1st to do that. So just wanted to, just give you, give you a, a heads up on that. And Councilmember Bokey, I don't know if you're going to touch upon this in your council comments, but I know you have a PCRC meeting this Thursday. And I just wanted to point out real quick that the city submitted three transportation projects for federal funding. And the city was able to secure funding for one, an overlay project on 100th from Lakewood Drive to Lakewood Avenue. However, we did not receive funding for our right of way for Military Road from Edgewood, Edgewood to 112th and Far West, or more importantly, construction funds from 100th to South Tacoma, 100th on, from South Tacoma Way to Lakeview. Apparently, the, the staff committee that vetted these applications, you know, they sent a recommendation on a seven-six vote to PCRC, which again, will be meeting on Thursday. And the city of Lakewood was on the six side, along with the city of Tacoma, University Place, Puyallup, as well as Pierce County and the Port of Tacoma, in voting against the proposed list. And the reason being, there's a couple of reasons. The big one was there's a large number of non-motorized projects, which is fine. However, there's only two roadway projects. And really, this federal funding is set up for roadway projects. So a number, that those six organizations, entities, cities, just have some concerns with that. In addition, there's one city, the city of Sumner, that is receiving 27.1% of the total funding, over $8 million out of the $49 million. And so there's some concerns there. And I'll let the Councilmember Bokey speak to it, but I know he's working with a couple of his colleagues in other cities to perhaps introduce a motion to make some changes there that would also include the city of Lakewood getting funding, either full funding or partial funding, for our 100th Street Project, South Tacoma Way to Lakeview. And then as it relates to your calendar, Association of Washington Cities is having their annual conference later this week. Also kicking off in partnership with Farmer's Market is on Tuesday, tomorrow is our summer concerts. And so there'll be a house band of Lakewood, so some classic rock tomorrow evening. On Thursday, Lakewood Chamber of Commerce is, is hosting an Armed Forces Connection event, and the guest speaker is Major General Matthew McFarland, who's the Deputy Commanding General of First Corps, as well as a representative from R22 Striker Brigade will be giving an update as well. So if you have an opportunity to be able to attend that, please, please let me know, and we'll get you, get you registered. And again, I mentioned a week from today, grand opening for the Maureen Howard Place. And that is, that's kind of the key highlight. So that's my report, Councilmember.
Thank you, City Manager Caulfield. Any questions for the City Manager? Councilmember Pearson.
Thank you, Councilmember Bokey. Just, just rather a comment on the village, so the, the request for reconsideration, the way I understand it is both the county and the applicant teams were both apparently ready to submit for it because one of the conditions was that they had to locate the trees in a tract, which requires a land division, which was not part of the original application. And so that's where that stems from.
Thank you. Any other questions for the City Manager? Hey, we'll go to Councilmember Comments because I think the City Manager did a good job. I'll, I'll, I'll speak to the PCRC thing here. We'll start with Councilmember Bell.
Thank you. I just would like to say that I had a great time. I had the pleasure of giving the opening remarks at the Juneteenth Celebration on Saturday. And so it was great to represent the city and the council, City Council there. And I reread the proclamation that we read a couple of weeks, or recently, a couple of weeks ago, I think. So that was, it was just a fantastic event. The room was full. I think that people, it's going to grow year after year, so that's something to look forward to. And I will be able to attend the Armed Forces Connection Breakfast, so you could put me down for that, please. I look forward to that on Thursday at 8:00. And congratulations to the, one of the people that takes care of us very, very well. Thank you, Brianna, and congratulations.
Councilmember Bransdeter.
Hey, Mr. Chair. The I also attended the Juneteenth Celebration, and it was a something that I believe has the potential to grow and become something that is recognized in the city. I mean, there was, there was singing and there was dancing and there were a, a good multicultural attendance to be able to go and do that. Most significantly, there were two speakers who spoke, and each of them spoke not with their ideas, but they spoke to their history. One was a gentleman who grew up in Selma, Alabama, who was there and had personal interaction with Dr. King when Dr. King was active there and the things that were there. And he had both a good story to tell and good insights as to how the, the sentiments of that time of addressing civil rights still needed to be moved forward, but that he particularly thought that, that the methodology that Dr. King espoused was, was, remains the right way, the right, the right way to try to move forward. And, and, and the, and the other gentleman spoke both to his, to his work in LA, but also his 30 years of work here in Tacoma on the hilltop, and how he had, and, and, and his theme was primarily about the greatest successes were, were, were not made by confrontation, but by people working together and having a common vision for, for how everyone gets together. And they, and, and I, and I think that the, the representatives of the church who coordinated the event were very specific that they viewed this as an event that was intended to be community strengthening. And my, in my community, they were very specific about Lakewood predominantly because that's where, where they were. So, so I, so, so, so I look forward to us being able to partner with them. And then this event being the second, the second time that it's happened, it's one of those events that if you keep doing it annually, it will grow and become more impactful to, to do that. A couple of meetings ago, I mentioned that I was going to attend the Pierce County Human Services Needs Assessment presentation, to be able to go and do that. And I don't know what the reasons, but they canceled the public presentation of the results of the assessment that. So I'm, I'm hoping that that gets rescheduled, but it didn't. It was something that Pierce County and the Metropolitan Development Council were doing together, and I don't know what happened there. But I did attend the SHAPE and the Pierce County Assessor Treasurer here in the council chambers, held a workshop for seniors and individuals with disabilities that wanted to take advantage of the updated rules for getting a property tax exemption, which increased eligibility considerably, both in terms of raising the income limits and, and, and some other factors. And there were 20-some attendees, and nearly all took and, and left with the idea that they were going to work through the application process that was there to look, to, to see whether, what their eligibility was. And I should, you know, compliment both the SHAPE folks and the Assessors Treasurers present, presenters, so that they gave very understandable presentations and were very well. And I would compliment those who attended, who asked very relevant questions that, 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 that helped clarify things for, for everyone in attendance to do that. And I am going to attend the AWC. And I am going to attend the AWC Conference later on this week. And I guess that I will remember to bring the city's flag back. One major task going going down there. Go and go and do that. And I would certainly add my congratulations to our to our city clerk for being recognized for the quality of her work and in her efforts.
Thank you, Councilmember Branstadter. Councilmember Pearson.
You're going in alphabetical order.
Yeah.
I, yeah, I would also like to congratulate Ms. Schumacher on the honor roll. That's very impressive and congratulations. I went on another ride along last weekend on Friday, and those are always fun and interesting to go on. We didn't have too much fun, but I did learn an awful lot about the the camera system, the the flock system. And so we have like 30 some odd camera, 30 cameras that are probable or thereabouts. And, you know, I I I think it would be interesting. I don't know if we are tracking it, but it'd be nice to be able to track to see how many, you know, pings we're getting and and how many times that we're actually apprehending these folks, because we drove around for an awful long time trying to chase pings down, and we were unsuccessful. And so, you know, at how at some point, we were investing money into this system. But I don't know what the, you know, what the real, we're not, it's not bearing any fruits. And so I don't know what next level of investment would take it to bearing more fruits in the term of, you know, apprehending suspects and and getting, you know, these cars, these stolen cars and stuff off the street. So I would like to see that data tracked if we can to see, you know, what kind of an impact that we'd be making if we doubled it, you know, to 60 and we're strategic about going around the edge of the city or where however, you know, those folks decide on where those go. But I think that'd be an interesting thing to look into. And then I'll be out for next week's meeting, so.
Thank you, Councilmember Pearson. Councilmember Lauricella.
Thank you, Councilmember Bokey. I will echo all of you in my congratulations on the well-earned recognition for our city clerk. Excellent job. One of the recognize our Parks Staff with their success of moving the big log. It was nice to learn that it's two and a half. Mary Dawsworth is tall. So that was an interesting fact from social media. Yeah. Last week on Friday, I attended the Pierce County Climate Conversation Group. That's a group of elected officials and some city staff from around Pierce County to talk about comprehensive planning around climate measures in in the community. And I learned that there are a good number of grants available through Pierce County Sustainability Resources. So I would encourage city staff, if they're not already in coordination with that group, to seek out information, because it sounds like there's a lot of potential funding available in the near term. And we also discussed opportunities to collaborate with our neighboring cities, such as University Place, Dupont, Stilliken, and potentially having something like a joint council meeting with our neighbors for recognizing common priorities and ways we can work together, not just at our borders, but within our cities to be taking a unified approach in some places. I also attended the Farmers Market last week. It was great. As as my wife and I were getting there, there were a couple of people leaving, and we overheard them say this quote, it says, "That's why I love this market. I always leave with something great." So it was cool to hear people say that to each other, not knowing that, you know, city folks were listening in. So I will echo what they said, because we always find something great at the market, too, whether it's flowers or fresh fruit and produce, or we always get cookies from there's an Argentinian bakery that's got a booth there every week, and those are always delicious. So lastly, as we had our the presentation tonight about speed and red light cameras, I would definitely appreciate facts and data from multiple scenarios. So we can look at just from a facts and data standpoint, what it looks like in terms of increased safety, potential revenue, and then what the offsetting revenue would be if we had to give 25% four years from now back to the state. And that's what I got.
Thank you, Councilmember Lauricella. I'll start off with the PCRC stuff, so we can kind of get the heavy lift out of the way. So the this goes every two or three years. We've had some good years in the city of Lakewood and some some not so good years. So just real quick synopsis, there there were nearly $50 million in requests, 49.6 million in requests. There was awarded almost 30 million, 29.73 million. Of course, there's set asides for the small city and and Pierce Transit gets about like a 15% set aside or something like that. There's some rubs, though, and and the City Manager mentioned. Depending on your feelings, one of the rubs is that there are only two road projects out of this 30 million. One is a widening project in the City of Sumner for two and a quarter million dollars. And then in University Place, a roundabout on Chambers Creek Road for 800,000. So some major projects got left off, and it would be the next two road projects. And both are freight, right? The the City of Tacoma, Portland Avenue improvements deal with freight. I think our 100th Street project, which was next in line, deals with freight. Because it's the it's the corridor that go leads to the industrial park. They 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 scored well. The issue is, is that goes back to the scoring that we talked for a year about, and it didn't get fixed. Is the non, so what they do is they they score everything, and then they say the top road project, it gets in in the top pedestrian or top non-motorized gets in. Then after that, it just goes by score, which sounds logical. But when I talk to folks, they're saying, well, the the deal is that the it's easier to score points. You'll score higher on on pedestrian projects, just because of how things you score points for. Like if you say, well, we'll put in a park bench or a bench, you get a point. And and you don't get a point on a transportation-related project like that. So on a road project. So there are some concerns. I have been in discussion with at least one with one other city has concerns. The City of Tacoma has expressed concerns. And so we're honestly, we're just waiting on Tacoma now. And and this thing is Thursday night. Traditionally, the the PCRC doesn't fiddle too much with these recommendations. And but there really are. I mean, if your concern is traffic and trying to fix your roads, this was a, this was a pretty tough round. The biggest item, and I don't know much about the project, is is in Sumner. It's a River Grove Community Pedestrian Bridge, which I didn't even know we funded for $5 million. So so one project got $5 million bucks out of the deal. One-sixth of the total. So pretty, pretty rough. I mean, this is, I think there'll be a fairly spirited conversation. I'm I'll have to try to find out tomorrow if if Tacoma has made their an amendment. I've I've worked something out with another city, but I I don't I don't know if we, I mean, if we don't have Tacoma's backing or the county's backing, it'll be a pretty difficult lift. You kind of have to line up those multiple because there'll be cities that and I and I don't know that I don't know where Pierce County is going to land on it. They voted against it in committee, but I don't remember, these are elected officials now that are deciding this. So I don't know where they're going to land. So that's it's it's just another chapter in this saga, I think, that's the become the PCRC. Juneteenth, I want to, I didn't, I did not make it. I had some other obligations, but I St. JJ's, St. Joseph's St. John's, has has invented this and has been a bulldog about this, and they really put a lot of effort in. And it is not a big church. I mean, we're not talking about a lot of folks who really put in a lot of effort. I'm glad we were able to host it here, because the weather didn't cooperate. If it had been outside, it would have been tough. It's, you know, it's only June. So big shout out to them for their for their efforts on on that. Mike, thank you. Councilmember Branstadter, thank you for going to AWC. It's something every year I think I should go to, and I never do. So maybe next year I'll talk about it. And then Ms. Schumacher, thank you very much. I in my day job, I work with clerks, and I know what they have to go through. And then then but they don't have the extra benefit of you do of having to babysit me once in a while through, you know, computer changes and various things like that. So thank you. Thank you very much. Very, very important job. So with that, we meet again next Monday night for a study session. And any other comments?